Well, if we could do it, but it would be, I just don't think people want to be pushed. So I thought we'd be the same, if that's okay, if everybody, if it works for everybody. You won't?
No, it's Mexico.
Next Friday? It's the seventh of December. No, 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 uh, November second.
Yeah, I'm doing like, or the, I'm gonna do that.
Okay, Verizon time says it's noon, so I'm gonna call this meeting in order, couple of housekeeping notes, the, I don't know if there's any of the public here, but public's welcome to attend, but we actually, but we really don't take any questions at the end of the work session. So Renee, would you please start us off?
Okay. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of council, I'm Renee Smith, Economic Resource Administrator for the city. I'm joined today by our consultants from Lotus Engineering and Sustainability. They've been managing our sustainability plan project. If you remember earlier last year, I pursued this planning grant to develop necessary documents to pursue implementation grants that would benefit the city and our residents. Since we've never done anything like this before, we felt it was important to reach as wide an audience as possible. The presentation today will cover the data that has been collected, the public outreach we have done, and what our community hopes to see prioritized in the future. So for now, I'm going to turn it over to our consultants.
Thank you, and Jennifer, we can start the presentation?
I may have missed your names, would you introduce yourself?
Yes, absolutely. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, members of council, my name is Tom Harrod. I'm a managing director with Lotus Engineering and Sustainability. We're a firm out of Denver, Colorado. I'm joined here by my colleague, Brienne, who will let you introduce herself.
Good afternoon, I'm Brienne Boyle, a senior associate with Lotus Engineering and Sustainability.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we just wanted to say thank you for spending the next hour of your time to talk about the Prostering Together Plan. And I did want to make one quick note, you'll notice in the title, it does include Laramie County. Uh, this project, the, uh, the grant project includes the Cheyenne MSA, which obviously is, is Laramie County as well, but the city of Cheyenne was the lead applicant and the, uh, the project manager on that side of the grant. So I just wanted to draw your attention to that. So, um, we've done our introductions and we'll go on to the agenda. Uh, today, we want to talk to you a little bit about the project overview, give you an update from, uh, where we've been since about a year ago. We'll talk to you about the data that we've collected, uh, the engagement process as well, and that, uh, finalize, finalizing with the planned focus area measures and goals. And we like to sort of go through this process. It really takes you through uh, what we like to do in terms of, starting of where are we at? What is the baseline? What are the data telling us? What's the community telling us as we engage them? Uh, where do we want to go? The goals and how are we going to get there? And that's the, the measures and the goals today. So, uh, for the project overview, I just wanted to reiterate, this was funded by Climate Pollution Reduction Grant from the US Environmental Protection Agency. Uh, Cheyenne selected Lotus as its vendor. Uh, we have been tasked with developing a work plan or a final, uh, deliverable for the EPA. It's going to include that data, the inventories, the engagement, the goals, measures and strategies. All that will be wrapped up with a number of other elements that are required by the grant to be part of a, a final plan that will be ready early next year. So to get to this point, uh, we've gone through quite a few phases. This work, uh, has been going on for a little over a year now. But we wanted to focus on the last maybe six months to really tell you and show you where, where we are at and how we got to today. So, in addition to all the data analysis that we've done, starting in March, we really started a lot of community engagement in earnest. And so, my colleague Brienne will be going through all that in a lot more detail. I just wanted to give you a little bit of a timeline to where we're at now and what it's going to look like for the next four months, uh, to get this final plan out the door, uh, uh, and delivered, um, by the end of February next year. So talk a little bit about the data. Uh, this climate pollution reduction grant is really looking at greenhouse gas emissions. So, uh, those, uh, emissions and gases that, uh, naturally occur in the earth, and that's what has given us the climate that we, we have had and allows us to, to sort of sustain uh, life with on, with on earth. Uh, but as we increase greenhouse gases in the atmosphere, that can also increase the amount of warming of the, the, um, globe experiences, both globally and, and locally too. So this can lead to a number of, uh, unfortunate things like increased temperatures, extreme precipitation, flash flooding, uh, worsening air pollution and more. Um, it can also, uh, if we decrease those emissions, that'll help us mitigate some of those worst environmental changes. So, while we talk about this at a global level, we also wanted to talk locally what this looks like as well. Uh, so I'm sure you all have experienced this yourselves, whether it's increased smoke from wildfires, not only here locally, but throughout the Rocky Mountain West. Um, the, uh, it obviously, those climate impacts are not just landed here in Cheyenne, but they've, uh, impacted all areas of the west. Uh, that's also included things like increased, uh, events like large hail events, tornado events and others that impact our, our daily lives as well. Not just in terms of our, our personal impacts, but also financially as well when it comes to insurance costs to cover the, the repairs associated with that. So, a greenhouse gas inventory, uh, really takes a look at all the emissions associated with the community from activities and sources. It's broken out by scope or sort of where they come from. And those scope one emissions are those direct emissions that come from our tailpipes of our cars, uh, from the vent stack in our, our homes where we're, we're heating our home maybe with, with propane or, or natural gas. Uh, it also in, includes, uh, some other, uh, emissions from, from transportation and industrial processes too. Scope two emissions are all about the emissions from, uh, the electricity generation. What we do when we turn on our lights, turn on our computers, we're requiring energy or electricity. Uh, depending on how that electricity is generated, it can, it can create more or less emissions as well. And then lastly, scope three emissions that, um, are related to community activity, but, but maybe not happening directly in the community. So you can imagine, uh, as waste might be taken outside of the city of Cheyenne and deposited somewhere, the emissions there are happening outside of the community, but they're, they're from the activity within the community. Uh, so here are the data. Uh, when it comes to Cheyenne and, and Laramie County or the Cheyenne MSA, uh, you can see that most of the emissions come from the built environment, the buildings, our homes, our, our businesses, our, our industry. Uh, it's a fairly large contributor to the overall emissions. Second in both areas are transportation. Uh, so that includes, uh, all those tailpipe emissions or, or any other transportation, uh, from, uh, from freight rail or, uh, even, um, airline emissions as well. You'll also notice in the larger counties, there are some additional emissions that maybe don't show up as strongly within the city. Those include things like industrial process and product use, so industrial activities and also agriculture, which can include, um, all emissions from agricultural land use, forestry, uh, and, and sort of those natural carbon emissions as well. So, uh, another piece of the grant deliverable is not only do we have to take an assessment of the, the emissions happening in, in 2023, it's, it's those emissions were, but we have to look at what's going to happen into the future if we do nothing at all. So we, we do know a few things are going to be happening, not only here within Wyoming, but nationwide. The electrical grid is continuing to, uh, bring on more, uh, low carbon sources like, like wind and solar. Uh, also, uh, nuclear, micronuclear, other sort of, sort of lower carbon, uh, emission sources. Uh, we also know that things are becoming sort of naturally more efficient. Our vehicles get more efficient. Uh, there are some federal cafe standards that just kind of contribute to the efficiency of cars, as well as other efforts to just bring on more technology like heat pumps that are sort of naturally occurring. So, this projects what it would, what emissions would look like in Cheyenne and the county if we do nothing else. We just sort of let those natural pieces happen. There is a, a slight decrease in overall emissions, uh, which is a good thing. I do want to point out that at the time that we did our, our data analysis, and this was the 2023 activity year, um, we did, we don't really have a lot of data on the data centers that could be potentially coming online. So this does not include those emissions at all. The, the nice thing about this grant is that it does continue into the future. We do have the ability to, once we get more data and information on that, we, we can add these in there and really sort of show what this might look like with some of those, uh, more, more known data points as well. Uh, I'll just go one more slide ahead just to show you, we can, we can really dial this down into very specific sources as well. And I think what's really evident here, uh, you can kind of see some of that, uh, the electricity emissions that sort of the orange shrinking. Those are naturally, or sort of, not naturally, those are, um, those are sort of baked in, uh, projections based on what we know is sort of happening in the utility sector in terms of bringing on those, uh, lower carbon electricity sources or, or generating sources. So, again, we can show a lot of, uh, a lot of different data, a lot of different ways depending on, on what is most useful for, for planning grants, uh, and other initiatives as well. Onto the next slide. So with that, I will turn it over to Brienne to go into all of our engagement activity.
Thank you. So one of our key goals for this plan and the process was to make sure that it invests in community priorities and what the community wants to see, not just uh, what an outside consultant might suggest for the community. And so in order to do that, we used a number of different engagement tactics. And I remember one of the first things that we talked about with city staff when we were thinking through our engagement plan was that community members like to engage from their couch. They like to take surveys, they like to do online engagement. And so we thought about how we could bake that into the plan. But we also talked about the value of getting multiple people in the same room together and having them talk among, amongst each other. And so we use some of those tactics as well. So you can see on the side here at a high level, we held, uh, in-person workshops, three of those, twenty-two different informational interviews and one-on-one meetings with different stakeholders, which I'll go into. We held three virtual sector meetings with different, uh, folks with expertise in different areas like energy and transportation and waste. We tabled at the Cheyenne Employee Picnic to talk with city staff and saw maybe a few of you there. And then we held two online rapid surveys. These were essentially just quick surveys, like five-minute surveys, and then had an online forum as part of the project website as well. So this shows at a high level, all of the different engagement tactics that we use throughout the project. If you go to the next slide, one thing we did was looked across all those different engagement tactics to see what key topics or key themes came up the most in this project. And to do that, we actually counted all of the different comments and, and conversations that we had based on their topic area, which provided a standardized way to quantify what we heard. And from that, these four key themes really emerged. So the first one was the need for more public engagement and education efforts. This really centers around making sure the community members are aware of some of the topics that are in this plan, how to make their homes more energy efficient or how to conserve water, and just making sure folks have, have that information accessible and know where to start and know how they can make a difference. The next key theme that emerged was the need for energy efficiency and building retrofits. Something that I'll share in the next couple of slides was how often the topic came up around high energy bills. And this is a great way for, to empower folks to help save money on their energy bills. A third key theme that came up over and over again was the need for quality affordable housing. And while at first glance, this might not seem like it's related to sustainability, um, having adequate housing and, and quality housing really ties into every different topic area that will be in this plan. And so that was something that came up again and again, and just the rising, um, cost of living and the need to support working families with housing affordability. And then the fourth key theme that came up was the need for safe active transportation options. Something that we talked about a lot was that most folks do travel by their cars, but there really is a desire to have more walkable areas, especially in downtown Cheyenne, um, to have more car-free areas, which is a great way to attract more business to, to local businesses as well. So that was kind of the high-level overall themes that we heard. Now I'll go into the different engagement activities we conducted and what we heard at those. So as I mentioned, we held three in-person workshops. And some of the key themes that we heard at these workshops, um, affordable housing is one I've already gone, gone over. Another key theme that emerged was the need to support key vulnerable communities. And when I say key vulnerable communities, we're really talking about low-income communities, um, folks in South Cheyenne, Latino communities, and especially folks living in areas with high wildfire risk. We talked about how we want this plan to benefit all the communities in Cheyenne and Laramie County, but especially these key vulnerable communities. Another key topic that came up a lot in the workshops was around the area's water supply and the need for an adequate water supply, just given the changes that are happening with less precipitation, and making sure that we conserve the current supply we have and also look for new sources as well. And then the last key theme that, that came up the most often was just like enlargement of the area's aging population and how we could retain residents, whether that's through offering more amenities, more activities, more high-paying jobs, just thinking through ways to, to retain those younger residents. I'm gonna have the workforce to support the area. At these workshops, we, we also just asked questions around, um, kind of what, what areas folks, uh, what value the most, and what core values define this community. We even asked for input on what we should name the plan, um, in our workshops. Okay, next slide. As I mentioned, we held over twenty different informational interviews and one-on-one conversations with folks. And the goals of these meetings were really to talk through different community members and different organizations' needs and to have them help advise us on the actual strategies that we'll include in the plan. And so on this side here, you can see all the different types of folks we talked to, including, uh, city council members, thank you. Uh, multiple different city staff, multiple different workforce and energy providers, a few, uh, regional county and state agencies, and then several community-based organizations. And we reached out to even more folks than you see on this list here. However, these were the ones that, um, actually responded and agreed to talk to us. Some of the key themes we heard in these informational interviews, I, I've already touched on affordable housing and public engagement, but the last was around business and job creation. And we, we talked about some of the challenges in bringing workers to rural areas like this. Um, but we also talked about a lot of the successes that have happened in this area as well and bringing jobs and bringing workers. So there's a lot of progress in that area too. Okay, so, um, back to that previous side, we held three different sector meetings, uh, focused on these three areas that you see on the slide here. These were open to the public, but, um, we really focused on speaking with folks that kind of work in these industries or were experts in these areas. And the, the three topics we centered around were energy efficiency and building retrofits, um, waste management, thinking through composting and recycling plans, and then the need for that safe active transportation, like I mentioned. We also tabled at the Cheyenne Employee Picnic a couple of months ago, um, had a lot of fun doing that. And at this activity, we wanted to hear from city staff on what they thought were, um, the, the highest needs. And we actually did an activity where, um, we gave folks beans and, and said, eh, like if this bean, uh, represented, say, a hundred thousand dollars, how, how would you want to invest it? How would you want to spend it? Um, to really get a sense of what resources they wanted to, um, dedicate the most to. And so the top three areas that emerged from this were the need for workforce development, natural resources protection, and then water conservation programs. Um, then, as I mentioned, we held two different rapid surveys, and the goals of these were really to hear from community members on the needs and concerns that they had in the region and ideas that they had for solutions. So, we are sharing a few of the key results that we heard in these surveys. Um, the first one you're seeing here, we asked what sustainability issues do you think are most important to address? And you can see that the top two issues by far were around drought and high energy bills. Then we asked, what is most important to you? Just to get a sense of, of the values that we wanted to make sure we included or the guiding principles to include in this plan. And the top two answers were maintaining a family-friendly, friendly community, and then encouraging economic growth in the region. We also asked around their attitudes towards different alternative energy sources, including nuclear, geothermal, battery storage, wind and solar. And you can see based on the results, there was really a, a wide range of sentiments ranging from, you know, folks that strongly disagree with these to strongly agree. So, responses all across the board. Next, we asked for information on some of the key sustainability issues or challenges in the region. So first, we asked about challenges that they've experienced or seen relating to drought. And it's no surprise that the top response was seeing larger and more frequent wildfires. But we also heard that there were, they were seeing impacts on plants, trees, soils and wildlife, showing there's interest in, um, natural land stewardship and conservation. Next, we asked about challenges they've experienced related to energy usage, and the top one by far was financial stress because of energy bills. And so I mentioned that previously, but that was a high need that emerged from this engagement. And then lastly, we asked, what challenges have they experienced related to transportation? And the top three issues were around first, safety, increase in accidents, but then also, uh, limited access to public transit, showing that there was kind of a need for, for better access to public transit options. And then lastly, we held a, an online forum, like I mentioned, for the project's website. And I've already touched on water supply, but the other key theme we heard from this avenue was the need to improve community services. And when we say community services, some of the topics that came up for folks were just having accessible grocery stores or childcare centers, um, or community centers nearby as a way to help retain, um, young residents or attract new workers to the region, just having access to those services. And so with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Tom.
Thank you, Brienne. So, uh, as Brienne, uh, told you all, we, we, we now have a good baseline. We have data and we have community engagement. So, now we start the process of trying to identify measures, uh, and action areas where we can put those two together and, and actually start plotting out a course towards hopefully achieving some of those goals. So with the next slide, um, this was a, uh, one of our exercises during engagement where we really wanted those folks who came to the community meetings to create a plan vision. We wordsmithed this a lot, um, got a lot of great input, but this was a statement that I think, uh, it, it really made us proud just to, to see the community come together and put something together that really reflected their values and their vision for what they want their community to look like. And that's to create a healthy and prosperous community that embraces our unique way of life through efficient utilization of resources, environmental stewardship and collective action. So, that is sort of our guiding principle or the umbrella in which we're starting to create some of these measures. So, um, uh, per the grant requirement and sort of how it, it lines up with the, the emissions data and the community engagement, we have, uh, five focus areas that includes energy and buildings, transportation, workforce, waste and water and natural and working land. So, using all those planned focus areas, we have identified some goals and measures. Uh, we're going to go over the goals for each of these sector, or each of these areas first. We do have, and you have in your packets, the measures that are associated with those, but we thought if it's acceptable to you, we'll just get through all the focus areas and the goals. And if we want to, uh, come back to any of these areas and talk more about the measures or any of these in more detail, we can certainly do that. So, that's acceptable. We'll go on to our first sector, uh, which is transportation. So two large goals, uh, emerged from our, our engagement process and from our data as well. Uh, first goal is to reduce cars on the road while ensuring it is safe to, to bike and walk. And so I think that really sort of focused a lot around the downtown area as well, just feeling safe to be able to cross streets and, and, uh, get, get out of the car and just walk and, and sort of uh, go in and out of shops, uh, a little more naturally. The second goal is to provide easy access to multiple transportation options that connect people from where they lived, from where they lived, where they work, uh, shop, play, et cetera. Uh, and that's really about, um, alternative transportation, maybe more bus services or other ways to get around town, uh, that, that don't have to involve a, a single occupant vehicle. And with this, I'm going to turn it over to Brienne to talk about energy and buildings.
Okay, we have four goals in the energy and building sector. So this was a big one that we focused on. The first was to increase the adoption of energy efficiency measures. Really, the goal around that is to help reduce those ongoing energy bills, but it also does mitigate emissions. Um, and that goes back to, like I mentioned, the feedback that we heard several times was, um, just the need to help with those high energy bills. And so increasing energy efficiency is a great way for residents to be able to do that and businesses as well. The next goal is around expanding clean energy development. So when we say clean energy, thinking about solar, geothermal, wind and nuclear as a way to not only reduce emissions, but help diversify the region's economy. And I know there were a wide range of sentiments around clean energy. Um, however, we did include it as a goal because, you know, if there's a way to still provide energy that is safe, affordable and reliable, and you're doing that through clean sources like these, um, there seemed to be support for that. The next goal was around strategically repurposing existing buildings and encouraging new buildings to have a lower impact. And we talked a lot about, um, making sure to not miss opportunities if a building is going through a renovation or retrofit in making sure that it is, um, you're considering energy efficiency while you're doing that. And then just to also think through any measures that new construction should have, whether it's energy efficiency or something else, um, thinking through solid waste or water to make sure it's reducing its impact. And then the last goal here was to ensure there's enough affordable housing to meet the demand and that there's a variety of housing types. And a few things we talked about here were the need for not just single-family homes, but other types of affordable homes like, like condos or other units like that as well. Then moving on to the workforce sector, we determined three goals here. The first was building a pipeline of skilled workers that aligns with workforce trends across key industries to promote economic vitality. So, we talked about where some of, um, the workforce trends are changing and making sure that workers are skilled, um, and, and able to adjust to any of those, those changing trends in workforce in this region. The next goal is to ensure that as Cheyenne and this region continues growing as a workforce hub, that environmental impacts are taken into account. And I remember one of the questions that was brought up at a, a stakeholder meeting was, you know, do, do we know what, what the limits are for water in this region? Like where is, uh, kind of where is that line? And are we thinking about that as, um, new businesses and new development is coming into the region? So just getting clear on kind of what those limiting factors might be, um, in terms of environmental impacts. And then the third goal, um, if you go back to the previous slide, was to enhance the quality of life to attract new workers and retain the young population. And we, we've talked about this a bit, um, but just making sure there's, you know, amenities like grocery stores that are accessible, childcare centers, um, to help attract and retain those workers in the region. I'll pass it back to Tom.
Thanks, Brienne. So our next, uh, focus area was waste management and water. Uh, the, the first goal identified, uh, through community engagement and, from, from our data, uh, was to reduce waste and ensure the longevity of the landfill. So that's really about two things, uh, diverting waste going into the landfill, finding, uh, appropriate composting, uh, or recycling, uh, that can divert some of that waste. That helps the longevity of the landfill. It also reduces some of the emissions associated with the landfill too. The second goal is to provide a resilient and reliable water supply and protect the region's water quality. Um, this is really about sort of that quantity and, and quality as well. So, uh, what can we do as a community to, to protect upstream sources of that water? Uh, what can we do to ensure that we have enough water? As, as Brienne was mentioning, uh, that water's not a limiting factor to, to grow into these areas that, that we want to grow into. Uh, the next focus area, uh, final one, uh, natural and, and working lands, uh, that is to preserve and protect sensitive, rare and unique natural areas. Uh, I, I think we heard over and over again, the sentiment that, um, uh, no matter, you know, no matter what is done, that, that folks wanted to see Cheyenne reflected in, in how they pursued uh, sustainability or energy efficiency. They've just had this sense of place with their community. They wanted to see that sort of natural lands, uh, reflected uh, in, in all things that they do. So, um, that was a really, a really fun sector for us to focus on as well. Uh, so with that, uh, we'd love to answer any questions or we can, uh, as my colleague says, double-click on any of those areas to, uh, get into more detail. So thank you so much for your time.
All right, let's start with questions of those, of those of us up here, and I'll just go left to right. Councilman Escobar, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Now, um, with our new data centers, are any of them actually looking to have solar power?
Mr. Head.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, as, as I understand right now, I, I have not seen a lot of the detail in terms of where those sources of energy are coming from or how much energy there is. Uh, as I did mention, we do have the ability with the, the grant, um, timeline to, once that data, once those data are available, we can incorporate that into uh, some of our, our metrics as well. So I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't have a, a direct answer. Something we can definitely, uh, get some more information on as, as we continue this process.
Thank you.
Mayor Collins or Director Bloom, you've dealt with the data centers more directly than we have. Do you have any input on, into that question?
Here are three to the, to the council. Um, right now with the data centers, a lot of them are using Black Hills facilities. Um, they have partnered up with other groups to have solar arrays that are off-site, and they're also using wind energy. So all of the different resources that are available in the region, whether it be natural gas, uh, wind and solar, those are all being utilized and they're all being put into the, the grid. Right now, we don't have any data centers that are presently proposed in the city limits that are, uh, going to be utilizing their own onsite solar arrays.
Thank you, Director. Councilman Escobar, anything else?
Not right now.
Councilman Eldridge?
President, running through you. Uh, so I'm looking at the graphs of the Cheyenne MSA stationary energy business as usual emissions project and, um, for twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty fifty, and then the one that breaks it out even further. Um, and I'm wondering, there's a, on the legend, there is a C, it looks like CII, natural gas and emissions and electricity. Is that for commercial and industrial?
Mr. Head. Uh, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Yes, most utilities combine commercial and industrial. There are some privacy issues with data distribution. There's a 1515 rule that basically just says if you don't have more than 15. Users in that bucket or if one of them is, so a lot of times that is commercial and industrial combined.
Okay, because of the in basically so that you don't have to retract. Okay, so my next question was. President Renee through you is around a transportation under goal number one and goal number two. Did you, are you including microtransportation in? Goal in that goal?
Thank you, President Renee, through you. Dr. Aldridge, in our engagement conversations, there was some discussion of some of that microtransit, whether it be scooters or bikes. I, I, I don't, I would say from all of our other community experience, I don't know if I saw as much interest here in Cheyenne for that as other areas. It was really more about sort of traditional bus routes, bike routes, walking routes as well. So while it's not excluded, I would just qualify that with, I think there's a larger focus on bus transportation.
President Renee, through you. I also am wondering, so we have all of this data collected and I think you did an amazing engagement. Reach, you know, having over 600 people that have responded through a variety of means is a pretty significant. Population, I would think, as far as surveys and that type of thing goes when you're doing research. So what is the next step? What, where do we go from here and? What types of, or when will we be able to see maybe some of your ideas? To address some of these goals now that you put forth and based on the data you've collected.
Mr. Herr.
President Renee, through you. Thank you. I'd like to maybe pass it off to my colleague, Brianne, to talk about engagement and then I could follow up on some of those next steps.
Sure. So in terms of next steps, one thing that we didn't show in this presentation, but that we've developed is. Specific strategies and actions that go into a lot more detail than the goals that we shared here today. And so. Those start to get at some of the more concrete next steps that need to happen. And then. In our last public in-person workshop that we held, we started talking through implementation. Of what some of the highest priority strategies could look like in terms of who the key partners are, who might take the lead on next steps. Kind of what some of the additional barriers are that we still need to tackle and then what additional engagement and outreach would need to happen. In order to move that strategy forward. So some of those additional details have been developed in draft form.
President Renee, through you. Thank you for that answer. One of my questions would be, are, when you bring those ideas forward. Will you include on those return on investment? What is the ROI for each one of those proposed steps or actions?
President Renee, through you. Thank you for that question. Part of the requirements of this grant are to include some elements of ability to, or sorry, authority to implement. Possible funding sources. Where we are at with this plan and what this grant is, is not quite an investment ready recommendation of, of doing. X by, by Y. We will include some cost estimates, but they're, they will be high level for this. For this planning process. What we really hope to do is to hand this off to City of Cheyenne staff to be able to go after more grants. Where some of that additional, more detailed return on investment analysis would be required.
And my last question, President Renee, through you is. Knowing that this then is a foundational piece for future grants, basically is what I'm hearing you say. What was the total cost for this plan to come to this? To this level?
Mr. Herr and Renee.
So President Renee, through you, Dr. Aldridge. So it was, we received a million dollars from the state. The consultants we have, it's a $330,000 contract that we have with the consultants that includes. Because I'm a one-person show, they've taken on a lot of the sort of legwork for me as far as the public engagement piece. So that was a big chunk of it as well as the development and of the plan and they were also doing the entire data collection. And that's just, not just the current greenhouse gas inventory, but this grant goes till 2029, 27. Thank goodness, I gave us two more years. So we'll do another greenhouse gas inventory towards the end of this grant cycle. That sort of gives us then, this is our benchmark and so we'll be curious to see where we're at and that was also included.
So sorry, one more, that led to one more follow-up question. So the one million dollar grant that we received, we've spent $330,000 on this contract. So at this point, the city's initial investment in this is. Your time and energy, we have not put any dollars, city tax dollars or city dollars towards this project yet.
That is correct. That is correct.
Councilwoman Emmons.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So on the survey page about rapid survey feedback. It's the what challenges have you experienced or related to drought? I just have a methodology question on that. So. Was the question, have you, you seen this as a challenge or is the question, are you concerned about this?
The question was, as you see on the slide here, what we were getting at is if they'd experienced that challenge themselves directly. Or if they have seen, you know, friends or colleagues or family members experiencing and heard others experiencing these issues. That's kind of what we were trying to get at with that question.
Mr. Chair. So then it's really not necessarily, I'm concerned about correcting this. It's just, I acknowledge that it's an issue.
I think that's correct.
Thank you. And that's the only question. Most of mine have been answered.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Based upon some of the answers. In your survey, I think we've done a very poor job of informing our public. We have an extensive recycle program. The. Mulch, I can't think of it. Compost facility has been operating for decades. We've kept millions of tons of product out of our landfill. We've been active 22 years ago, we bought land. For a future landfill. So even if this one becomes. Completed, we have resources. We have 45 miles of greenway paths throughout our community for biking, hiking. Connecting to parks and schools and businesses. I just, I'm just amazed at some of the answers and I think we have done a poor job. We have done a poor job of informing our public of what we've been working on. And maybe we need to improve that. I could go, I could go through all of the things here and. Even, even the water situation. We are actively seeking additional resources. To replace the water if we lose a hog park through the Colorado Compact. So I mean, we are close. To, you know, substantial amounts of additional water resources, but apparently we haven't communicated that. So. If nothing else out of this, I think we have to do a better job. I'm very fascinated by the greenhouse gas and where it's coming from. And it's also difficult, you know, some of the answers where we want to preserve our. Our environment. And yet we want more renewable energy. Well, there's a 700 megawatt solar farm being built right now. It's one of several. And yet. People don't want us to disturb the environment. How do you, you know, I don't know how to balance those. We have a huge wind farm just west of town on city land. Most of it's on the city land. To help prevent the greenhouse gases. And yet, maybe folks don't see those big windmills. I see them every day. So again, I don't know if it's communication, education. How do you balance, you know? This 700 megawatt is taking up multiple sections of land. There's battery storage on site. I don't know how you build one without the other. So. I guess I don't really have a question for you, but I, I, I think we as council members need to do a better job of informing the public. Thank you.
President Renee, can I say something super quick?
Go ahead, Amy.
So just to speak to where some of this feedback came from as well, in our in-person workshops, we had a. A really large presence from the Board of Public Utilities, from the Sanitation Department, from Public Works, from the Planning Department. So a lot of the city staff was very engaged in looking at city processes. And thinking through, and that's where some of these recommendations, they do have thoughts and ideas on what we could do as a city to improve. And so that's, you know, at that level, there was really great dialogue. As far as what the city ourselves can do to address some of these. And implement as far as the, the waste treatment. It was very, very interesting. I'm glad you liked the data too.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Seagrave.
Just in response, I would love for those ideas to come forward. Share it with, let us know what it is. So if you can do that through your program or any other way, I'd love to hear those recommendations.
Sounds like another work session.
President Renee, just a real quick response. I do want to recognize, I think Renee noticed that as well during some of our community engagement. She has asked us as a, as a firm to develop some informational sheets around a lot of these focus areas. So we're in the process of finalizing those. So I think that's a great opportunity to help get that message out and we would certainly welcome additional feedback into how those are structured and what they are pointing to in terms of city services.
Thank you. I'm going to go to the members online and I'm just going to go in alphabetical order. So Councilman Moody, do you have any questions?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mr. President, through you. I do have several questions. My first one was. Why was low sulfur, Wyoming coal and natural gas not included within any of the surveys? As I had constituents reach out saying, you know, why these weren't included.
Mr. Herr, do you have an answer to that?
President Renee, through you. Thank you for that question. In our community engagement, we are really looking at sort of engaging those who are utilizing the services. So consumers of electricity, not, not just producers as well. It is an area of engagement that we try to make sure we do get a broad focus on. We had hoped folks would come to the community session as well, really representing the, the community members too. So we definitely recognize that. That, that there's a, there's sort of an endless supply of potential outreach that could be done. So thank you for that.
Well, Mr. President.
Sure.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President, through you. My second question is, did anyone associate this grant or any? Did they reach out to any of the multiple oil, gas companies within Laramie County? Or the state regarding potential impacts of this grant? Because Laramie County is number three in the state in oil production, number 10 in natural gas production.
Mr. Herr.
President Renee, through you. In our engagement process, we did reach out to a number of organizations. Again, those folks who are represented by the. The services delivered. I do not believe that we reached out to any, anyone directly in those industries. But our focus was on community engagement and again, sort of the users of those services. So the folks who are. Consuming either that natural gas through their homes or businesses.
All right, Paul, Mr. President.
Go ahead, Councilman.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President, through you. Did anyone reach out to any representative from the Wyoming Petroleum Association? And/or the Wyoming Mining Association?
President Renee, through you. Further, the grant process and in consultation with the city, our outreach was largely to some of the organizations and community members within Cheyenne and the Laramie County area.
Councilman, I think it's been stated that they generally talk to the end users and not the producers. So.
Okay, one more, a couple more follow, two more follow-ups, Mr. President. When EPA Secretary Lee Zeldin visited Wyoming back in August, did anyone associate this grant, discuss with him this specific grant?
Mr. Herr, does the director of the EPA, Renee, does the director of the EPA concern themselves with grants?
Mr. President, through you. I did, actually did not speak with Director Zeldin. The mayor was part of that conversation. So I cannot answer that question. I was not privy to. That meeting.
Okay, and then just one more question. Is anyone aware that EPA Secretary Lee Zellum proposed on September 12, 2025 to eliminate reporting and greenhouse gas reporting? Public comment on this rule change closed yesterday. So 2026 is probably going to be implemented. Is anybody aware of that?
Mr. Herr.
President Renee, through you. Yes, we are aware of that.
All right, thank you. That's all I had. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman White.
Thank you, President Renee, through you. I don't have any questions. I, I just echo. My colleague from War Two, Councilman Seagrave's concerns that. Perhaps we're not doing a good enough job communicating what we're working on because, because we are working on a great many. Different, different things to prepare for the future. With regard to this. So I do appreciate the engagement process that. These folk, that Lotus Engineering undertook. We don't often see that. We don't often see something quite this extensive. So I do appreciate that. Thank you. That's all I had.
Thank you. I do have a couple of questions since everybody else is down. Going to the workforce measures where ensure the families moving into Cheyenne have access to essential resources nearby. Do you have a definition of what those essential resources are?
So some of the resources that came up in our conversations were around grocery store, childcare centers, community centers, parks. And the South Cheyenne area was brought up several times and just a need for improved access.
Follow up on that and where are community centers? Were, what were they? Were they talking meeting space, recreation space? Any input into what that definition would be?
We didn't get into the specifics in a lot of the conversations, but we do have notes from all of our one-on-one informational interviews and can go back and share those too.
Yeah, thank you. And then my last question, I noticed on the rapid surveys feedback, what's most important you. Second most important was encouraging economic growth. Third most important and not three, only 3% behind was limiting growth. So I didn't, and then on the. Previous page on sustainability issues, there was a, the third most important was urban sprawl. So. Is there, is there a perception that we are experiencing urban sprawl? Apparently there must be. I didn't know what feedback you'd heard on that. And were there concerns about, I mean, obviously. We have all operated under the theory that we need more economic growth and we've been very supportive of that where we can be. Is there some sentiment that out there that we are growing too fast?
I think that ties back to making sure there's resources and access for folks in terms of when you're thinking about growing. I mean, there was a lot of interest in encouraging that economic growth. So that, that came through all the time, but there was a need for preserving open spaces. And making sure folks had access to the resources they need to have a livable flourishing life here.
All right, thank you. All right. Any other questions from the committee?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Seagrave.
Just one follow-up and.
I'll go, I'll go right to left this time.
Your conversation reminded me. We were talking about affordability of housing and yet at the same time, your report reflected improved. Standards. How, how do you, how do you do both of those? How do you create affordable housing with improved? Insulation and heating and those types of things.
That's a great question. Yes, Mr. Herr.
President Renee, through you. Thank you for that question. That is one of my favorite questions. I think when we talk about affordable housing, it's not just about. Being able to purchase the home. It's about being able to afford the energy bills. It's also about being able to afford the transportation costs from your home. To where you need to go to work to pay for that. So a lot of times when we think of affordable housing. It is about maybe spending a little bit of extra on, on the building itself to make it more insulated, have better technology. uh have better technology, more efficient technology, that the long-term cost of owning that home uh makes it affordable for for that long term. So that's a um something that I think um is really important to consider with affordable housing. It's not just the actual price of it, but can you afford to live in it? Can you still afford to get to where you want to go uh to work or 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 play?
Thank you for that.
So residents of Cheyenne often say you can get anywhere within fifteen minutes in Cheyenne still. So was transportation and being able to afford to go to work really that big of an issue? Yes, it was. I see you nodding.
Sorry, I was nodding to, I was nodding, you heard to take your question. I apologize.
Mrs. Boyle.
Something that we discussed was that, um, you know, some folks are living in Fort Collins, um, because there's more affordable housing options, or they're they're living out of state or further away. Um, so they have more affordable housing options and then commute into Cheyenne for work. So it's something to consider.
Councilman Escobar.
Uh, I just wanted to talk a little bit about how we're doing with informing our constituents about some of our programs in the city. Uh, in single-family housing, based on our recycling program and the amount of waste that we have um in that program is really decreased quite a bit, but I think where we're failing is probably in multi-family housing units uh in our city parks. Uh, for example, we had a, on my grandson's birthday in our city park and the amount of recycling uh products that we just threw in the trash was about a truckload. Uh, on our golf courses, we have two cans, one for trash and one for uh aluminum cans and bottles. But when I asked the workers at the the golf course about the recycling program, he said we didn't have one. They all go in the same trash can at the end of the day. So why do we have two trash cans on the golf course if we're promoting recycling, but yet we're not actually doing it ourselves? So I think there's, and I had mentioned during our budget about having a recycling program in our city parks. And uh in my travels, I see that in downtowns, other downtowns, in other city parks, on other golf courses that I um visited. So I think there's so much more that we can do in our city with uh education and information that that we aren't. And uh we still have a long ways to go, even in in our motor pool. We've talked about going to uh alternative fuels and electric vehicles with in our motor pool. We probably have one of the largest motor pools in this in the city. Uh, probably next to the base. Um, so there's plenty of work for us to do here.
Hey, thank you for comments. Thank you. Councilman Moody, you have your hand raised?
Uh, yes, I do. Uh, thank you, Mister President. I just want clarification. Did I hear that housing is cheaper in Fort Collins than here in Cheyenne and Laramie County? Uh, I thought it was the opposite, or cheaper than Fort Collins and Laramer County?
Ms. Boyle, you made that statement. Do you want to clarify that?
One thing that we talked about with stakeholders and the public was um just some of the lack of options. You know, there's uh, single-family housing is plentiful in Cheyenne, but Fort Collins or other places, there might be more diverse options for housing, um, like those condos or duplexes or other units like that.
Mister Moody.
Yep, tha- thank you, Mister President. And just uh another comment here. I know we get, we we definitely have data centers here, but a lot of them are starting to look more to natural gas and the coal. I read that in the Washington Post just a couple of months ago. So something that we should really think about. And actually, Bill Gates announced yesterday, it's not gonna be doomsday. We should really focus on the well-being of humans and a lot less on emissions. And that can be, Google it, you can see what uh Mister Gates said. Thank you, Mister President.
Thank you. Councilman Aldrich.
Uh, President Renee through you. I'm just curious about the, um, as you started talking about commuting. And um I've been looking at some data um for my day job that shows that we have about two thousand people who commute out of Cheyenne to the Northern Colorado Front Range area to work, with about a thousand that commute in. Um, and the US Department of Labor reports that most people will drive no more than seventy-five miles one way to commute for um employment. So I'm just wondering if you were able to capture in any of your data the number of people who responded or participated in any of your outreach engagement that were actually commuting or um involved in that. You know, daily exchange almost. It's really common, quite honestly, in our community. If you drive to pass some of our larger employers like Laramie County Community College and the VA Hospital to see out-of-state license plates uh sitting in their employee parking lots. And so I'm just wondering if you captured any of that in your data collection.
President Renee through you. Um, I'll touch a little bit on on data first, and then maybe we can talk about engagement. It's something certainly we can go back and look at all the individual responses and see if we have anything tied to that. In in terms of data, um, it would, uh, we are often, we often look for those inbound outbound trips. That is a really big driver of of those larger transportation-related emissions because they're longer trips and they're made on a regular basis. Uh, there are some data sets out there that that we can draw upon if we get to the point of of uh maybe moving towards implementation or or another grant application, that we can use some of the the hard data to show what are the number of trips, how long are they, and where are they coming from? Um, yeah, so there there are some data to support that. Uh, but in terms of the engagement, I I don't know if we had anyone who had a a particular story to tell about that.
I'd say we didn't discuss this in detail in our engagement, but we did review other data sources that showed the average commute times for folks residing in the county and the city. And they they weren't exorbitant. Um, I I don't remember off the top of my head, but um, they weren't really long commute times. So there is data that that's existing around those commute times of residents in the county.
I think that one of the things as we go further with this and as we look at other grants that we might want to consider that um, even as late as the, or as long ago as the nineteen eighties, um, Northern Colorado recognized the emissions issue with a lot of commuters into the Denver metro area. And so while I was living in Fort Collins, um, we, I participated in a daily commute of a hundred and seventy-nine miles a day round trip to the Denver Tech Center from Fort Collins. And there was a lot of public transit um being pursued at that time for carpooling and to encourage that. So I would just think that especially when we had, know that we have two thousand people leaving every single day and a thousand coming in, that we might eventually look at something if that, if we determine that that's where one of our major impacts could be made on emissions as we look at future grants.
And so Moody had his hand raised, but he took it down. So, okay.
No questions.
All right. Thank you for the presentation. We look forward to more information in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.